Good evening and welcome to our opening day in the school system. Today's August 11th and we're going to get started with roll call.
All five board members are here.
Great.
Ready to go.
Next we have the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Dr. Dillon in the audience who's going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, for the nation, for the people, for its citizens, for its justice and for all.
Thank you. Getting started with consent, may I get a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Yes, Pam and then Kathy? And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, wonderful. Next, we're getting to our two workshop topics for this evening which we're very excited about as a district. Dr. Wall.
Thank you, Leila. We're very excited to have these work committee updates as a continuation of the 13-14 goals. And as we had mentioned at the end of the year report and throughout last year, the status and timeline was we had anticipated work committees that were smaller subcommittees of the committee that met during the year, working in the summer with the charge from the committee at large. So to kick it off, we have our teacher evaluation committee update. Luther Loughlin is with us, teacher. And we're very excited to have Carmel High School teacher with us tonight to give the update on this very collaborative committee that is making some headway. Luther, thanks for being here.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone and all stakeholders. I'm a special ed teacher at Carmel High School and I'm one that served on the subcommittee for teacher evaluation. To begin, this was formed by Dr. Wall and consisted of 20 administrators and 20 teachers. We began our first initial meeting with the assistance of Lynn Adler, who was from Illinois State, or excuse me, Illinois Teacher Association. And she led us through the interest-based negotiations which she facilitated us in providing all of our input. Next, the teacher evaluation that was comprised of 40 members, then was selected for eight of those, or nine of those members to serve on a small committee. That small committee then worked during the summer very diligently and have come up with some ideas and recommendations at which we will present to you at a later date. This committee, serving as the working committee, has those recommendations and what we called tweaks that initially came from the large committee of 40. The teachers who also served on this committee are very supportive in the ideas and the tweaks that we have come up with. And we feel that these recommendations that we would make changes to or additions to for using the current RISE system would be beneficial to everyone. At this time, are there any other questions, thoughts?
And Luther, excuse me, just next steps would be presenting these tweaks for 2014 to the association at discussion. And there are two other members on the teacher evaluation committee in the audience. Brian Lyte was on the committee and Martha McFarland from ESC. Thank them for all their efforts. And we'll be presenting those tweaks to the association, well, it'd be kind of a joint presentation with teachers and administrators on the committee, presenting those at discussion so that we can get, Luther alluded to, the tweaks for this year in place. And really commend the committee to get things moving for this year.
And our next working day is September the 4th. Thank you.
Okay, we do have some questions if you, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. I guess I'd like to hear just one more time, how do the teachers and the others on the committee feel about interest-based negotiations?
She took the committee of 40 people through a process so we could then all look at everyone's input. So a couple hours were spent in collecting data as well as working with each other to find out who we all were within that group of 40. And then she was able to help guide us through the group process of small groups, then the large group, which as she put it, helped us tell the story about teacher evaluation in Carmel Clay Schools. And it appeared to be very effective in its use and how we could, over a period of two days, come together and provide all the information, I believe of like 24 chart pieces of paper all the way around the room. And it was amazing how all 40 of us had our opportunity and felt like we were heard in terms of what we provided around the room. If you'd been in here as a working member, it was very impressive.
Thank you very much. I'm very encouraged to hear that that model seems to work well.
So, it might understand after the 40 came up with all of these ideas, then the small group of nine worked with those ideas to come together with some tweaks and recommendations?
Yes. Dr. Wall and Brian Lyte worked together after that large meeting to determine what would best represent the core group from that larger group. So it was made up of teachers at elementary and middle school and high school, as well as levels of the different types of teachers who taught in a given area.
Wonderful. Mrs. Mals.
Yes, Dr. Wall, how soon is district discussion?
We meet the 19th, next week.
August 19th. And how soon after that would the teachers be able to know what these tweaks are?
Well, Brian and I discussed it, based upon the discussion, we could implement them this year. But, you know, discussion would guide that, but right after that.
Okay. Because I think it's important that teachers know towards the beginning of the year-
Oh, yeah.
-what they're working for.
Right. And Brian and I discussed even moving up discussion until, you know, we realized that the 19th is a week from tomorrow, which, you know, we better move this up and we're seeing, well, that's really not too far away. But we agree, sooner the better, absolutely.
Mrs. Freed.
Just one question. I know that as the state moved into the new evaluation system with the rise in different rubies, there was a lot of angst amongst teachers and not only here at Carmel, but across the state. Do we now have a sense of a little bit of calming and that perhaps this really could work?
Yes.
Or is the general morale better about evaluation system?
Well, it's hard to say because we have not released any information about the tweaks. But those of us who've served on the committee felt that the tweaks that we would make would be very helpful in teachers' understanding.
Yes, and then this following year, you're going to be looking at possibly using this tool or using other tools for the evaluation of teachers in the upcoming years, is that correct?
Yes, is that right?
The charge from the larger committee was to have the subcommittee look at the research and kind of evaluate that and present to the larger committee, here is what a really nice evidence-based teacher evaluation system would look like. So we'll look at what the research says, use that as a lens through which to look at RISE or to look at other systems that are out there, and then continue to get input and feedback from the various stakeholders here in the district, and then bring the two perspectives together. So we might say, RISE is a great system, let's add a few more tweaks, maybe this will serve our needs the best, maybe there's another system that will work better, maybe there's a system in a district or components of one system that we would like to combine with others to be a hybrid. There's really no established outcome, the committee left that open, but we definitely want it to be evidence-based and we want it to honor the input, the story that was told through the interest-based problem-solving process for the district to meet our goals.
Okay. Has that, the group of nine, have they already evaluated multiple systems to come forward this fall to present to the 40 or?
What we've done is started with the research. So we've looked across some of the researchers who have, you know, some of the big names kind of in the business, and what we've done is looked at studies for each of those various authors, and we pulled out key components, key lenses through which to look at different evaluation systems. So we want to start with the evidence-based and know that this is really what creates an evidence-based teacher evaluation system that will serve our needs well. So we're talking about really two things, teacher evaluation, but also teacher growth and development. So we bring those two pieces together. Here's what the research tells us is the best practice. Now we'll start looking at the various models that are out there. So we wanted to do that part first, then go to the models and see what would align with the research and with local needs. So we haven't begun looking at those models yet, but that's the next step for us.
Okay, the next step for the nine or the larger 40?
Well, the next step, well, we want to communicate our findings to the larger committee, but as we begin to look at those, those things, we'll start with the smaller subcommittee, then we'll always go back to the larger-
Okay.
...committee to report.
Okay. My second question to the both of you, the tweaks and recommendations, is it your hope that we'll be able to adopt all of those to support a more Carmel-friendly RISE evaluation tool?
I think, I feel pretty certain, and of course I'm speaking for the subcommittee and the larger committee, but we have such nice direction and really an organic collaborative process. I honestly think that we will be able to create the hybrid or adopt whatever's out there that really will serve our needs the best.
That's really exciting. Thank you. Thank you so much for all of your work. Are there other questions from the board? Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you Luther for being here this evening. Martha, Brian, all your work, appreciate the committee work. Moving on, I'm going to let Dr. Dudley introduce the middle school program evaluation. Members here this evening, we appreciate their attendance as well. Amy?
Great, thank you. In this evening, we have two of our subcommittee members that will share what the middle school program evaluation subcommittee has been working on this summer. We have Ms. Lori Katz, Assistant Principal at Clay Middle School, and we have Mrs. Stephanie Sorchendruber. She is now the Media Specialist at Clay Middle School. She was formerly a social studies teacher and just moved into that position this year, today.
Day one was a success, so we're hoping that that continues. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We are here to give you a little bit of an update. Much like the teacher evaluation committee, there was a subcommittee formed from the larger middle school program evaluation committee. And the members of that committee are administrators and teachers both that already had the background in the why research we had done in Phase One. And so we've met four times over the summer and got to spend some summertime together and looking at Phase Two. And now that we know the why behind what's best for middle school kids, how does that look in Carmel with our kids, our teachers, and our systems? And so over the summer, what we've been looking at is how does that theory translate into a strong practice for kids?
And so our most recent work this summer was specifically looking at different scheduling options and the ramifications of those various options, looking at it from different angles and trying to put together the best possible option. Our next steps will include getting feedback from the rest of the program evaluation committee, the community members, parents, students, teachers, and getting that feedback. We will need that feedback and our work should be completed with scheduling by December because in December we need to start scheduling students for the 2015-16 school year.
Quickly, so it's been an interesting process. It's been really great to continue to engage and work together and collaborate and make sure that we're really trying to come up with the best model for our kids.
Thank you very much. Dr. Wall, do you have anything you'd like to add before we open the floor to questions?
Just to say that, you know, this goes into a two-year phase and we did know going into this last year that December 14 was our date and time to take a look at operationalizing this for 15-16 because of scheduling. So ladies, thank you for all your efforts and being mindful of that timeline. And we're very excited to really look at middle school and how we deliver middle school instruction and also how we fill that void at the middle school where our middle school teachers don't have collaboration time. It's a significant void, just to be blunt, I mean, and we need to fill that. And we need to figure out an operationalized method that does that because we know collaborating teachers result in student interests, higher degree of student interest being met to give them that time and instructional value going up. So there's a direct connection.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open the floor to questions. Mrs. Hackett.
I really just have one question. So the schedule, the daily scheduling that you're looking at, you're talking long-term with that too, not a short-term tweak for this year, but looking at that as part of the bigger picture?
Theoretically, a new schedule couldn't be put in place until a year from now.
Okay.
So spending the fall, looking at what schedule best meets the best needs of kids and meets our needs in Carmel, and then putting that in place by December so that we can, because we start scheduling our students in January. So we'd spend the spring scheduling our kids, doing any kind of professional development or anything we would need to do to serve teachers to be able to meet the needs of that schedule, and then implementing that schedule this time next year.
Okay, gotcha. I just wasn't sure if there was like short-term tweaks. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Other questions? I do have a question. Are there any findings that you have, the committee has felt that are so important that we need to kind of tweak this upcoming year, or have you implemented any changes?
I would say right now, as far as what we've learned from findings, has just brought a mindfulness to the members of the committee, whereas we're able to attempt to be more intentional and more what-if, or what could that look like, or how could we, we do such a good job of meeting the needs of our kids with what we're currently doing, but thinking about just being mindful, how could we really just go from great to greater, I guess? So no implementation of any sort right now, but just an increased mindfulness and awareness that I think will serve us better as we move forward.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Mals.
Besides the schedule, are you also looking at adding or subtracting coursework, doing something with world language, for instance, or the health classes?
World language, health, all of those things that we might consider, core classes, elective classes, all of those conversations would really kind of have to happen after we looked at what the schedule might look like, and then looking at how do those best practices within those areas fit into that schedule? So at this time, no decisions have been made about any of those things, knowing we need to get a schedule in place that's best for kids overall first, and then determining how those pieces will place into that schedule. So nothing determined yet.
And I just want to add too with that, one of the pieces too will take the middle school program evaluation and then also combine it with recommendations from the world language program evaluation that we worked on last year, and then also the social studies, and take those recommendations, because it's not just in a vacuum with middle school, but it's looking at the whole K-12 continuum piece.
So the plan for implementation would be, we would be looking at possibly a new middle school program for next fall, a middle school schedule, and then that would in turn then affect the programs that are offered during that timeline, right?
Possibly.
As you plan this plan for implementation, do we have also a plan for accountability to find out if what we have done is really making it better, or are we keeping those things in mind as to how we're going to track our progress?
I think with any kind of adjustment, you have to make sure that you're kind of planning backward and putting those pieces to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing and that we're serving the needs of our kids. Since we're so kind of in the front of this and realizing, we've got to get this organizational, structural system in place and then see how the pieces fit, and as we're placing those pieces, determine how we're going to check the temperature to make sure that those pieces are really valuable and making a difference in our kids. So at this point, no specifics, but certainly something that we've got to continue to look at.
But we have a window to do baseline data, obviously before implementation and during. And the things I hit on the collaboration time for teachers, there are definite themes coming through the research. It's not like this schedule is going to guide everything. We're trying to figure out, like, collaboration time, advisor-advisy programs for middle school kids, highly recommended throughout the research. Opportunity to articulate not only 6-12 with programming, but make sure we have those transitions, five to six, and then articulation 6-12. That feeds into our discussion on student growth as far as assessment. We've talked about that. Amy gave a report on that as far as what programs are out there as we look at assessment, articulation, 6-12. So all those things are part of what we're seeing in the middle school research, best practice. And the committee is going to suggest how we deliver that. And, I mean, that's going to be a challenge, but I think we have the right people at the table to be innovative and creative and meet that challenge.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. Are there questions from the board? Wall, thank you very much. And I'm going to go with first name Stephanie and Lori because I didn't quite get how to say your last name.
Okay.
So that being said, thank you so much for joining us and for all your work through the course of the summer as well. Dr. Wall, next?
Thank you very much. And Amy, thank you and your team for getting everything, organizing the middle school program evaluation and getting that best practice in front of our committee. And that's good stuff. Thank you very much. Draft goals for this evening for consideration. It's booting up. Couple of things before I start to just walk through some of the slides. We have heard back from Advanced Ed. We did, they finalized our accreditation for the next five years. Again, kudos to Amy's department and principals, assistant principals, teachers in the audience that were on the committee. I know Brian and I were on a committee together. We got final accreditation, so that's a big, that's a big kudos to the whole district. I bring that up in reference to the goals. You'll see permeated in the goals, the suggestions from Advanced Ed. And I think I said when we got the report from Advanced Ed, it was really reaffirming some of the things they cited that we had looked at in reference to goals and actions that we thought we were doing and then would continue to do as we go forward. And Amy's did a nice job of kind of giving me some highlights of how we interwove that into the goals, which is what we should be doing. Get back to that one song sheet thing rather than multiple. So I just want to draw attention to that, that that is throughout this, and I'll just make some references to that as we go along. As we look at the goals, vision statement is present, and it's same and reaffirmed, and same with mission statement. And as we talked about, and you'll see in the goals, and we talked about this a year ago, two areas that we want to work on and fill kind of the gap filler, a long-range strategic plan and district belief and value statement, whatever terminology you want to use for that. And as you saw in my suggestion in the notes, is to have the strategic plan guide some of these larger things because they're very stakeholder engaged. You have the parent groups, teachers, support staff, administration, community at large, all a part of that process. We still look at the students as a center of how we look at the goals and what we do and how we allocate our resources. The strategy map has been a great guide as I've been in the buildings and have conversations with principals, as we look at the success of our students in a way that is balanced. You know, Carmel Clay Schools continues to have a hallmark for high student achievement, and we embrace that and will continue to strive for that. At the same time, being mindful of the well-being of our students. And I've heard and seen a number of initiatives and things that we're doing and will continue to do through building school improvement plans and initiatives that look at that balance. And again, the well-being of our students has always been at the utmost of everyone's mind before I walked in the door. This simply gives a visual to look at how we do what we do. The discussion on social-emotional learning last year was just get the common vocabulary out. We're looking at delivery systems this year to be embedded, not an additional separate curriculum, but embedded in what we do and how we deliver it. And we're looking at that, and I'll make some comments on that as I go through the actions suggested for this coming year as well. Overarching governing practices are important. As I told the teachers and administrators as I went around on prep period meetings, those overarching governing practices of standards alignment and research and information are key because we don't want to fall victim to ideas de jour, and we've all felt those. And the good news is Carmel Clay Schools has always been mindful of program evaluation models that have best practice, standards alignment as part of how we do what we do. But it's just, it's a big reminder to all of us that some ideas can sound really good and let's implement yesterday, and then this makes us pause to make sure that we don't initiate anything without first purging or taking something away because as we all know, the teacher's day is full. And to give more without being mindful of taking something away is not how we want to do it. So that's a good reminder to have that as part of what we do. The goals that we have that are up on the wall over there, suggesting slight modifications to Goals Four and Five, not significant, but slight. And again, that's, those goals and the strategy map are posted in our buildings, and as we adopt this year, we would do the same. And the minor modifications in facilities, you know, it hit me when I was in Washington, DC, being a part of the green team accepting the, one of the green awards for high schools, that sustainability in green facilities are something that Carmel Clay Schools stands for. And in reality, that really was a district award, but Indiana hadn't established the district methodology to apply for the award, so Carmel High School is the recipient of the award, representing Carmel Clay Schools. So it hit me that we didn't have that in our facility goal, and I think those are pretty vital statements because we are a model. And we will be bringing that green team back for some more recognition at the next action meeting because it was a really fantastic award. So suggested modifications to the facility. And then under faculty-staff, the more we look at what we do, the recruitment mentoring and retention of high-quality teachers and administrator, faculty-staff, have you, is really key. So to put the components of recruitment, mentoring, and retention in that are suggestions to shore that Goal Five up. Student standard has the yeoman's part of the goal work, which it should because it's really, it all feeds into our student, but this really draws into that piece. One of the things I heard with the stakeholder meetings, and that was, you know, representing 15 buildings, community stakeholder meetings, stakeholder meetings with Board of Education, ESC staff, as well as the district leadership team, just a piece about parent ed opportunities. And when we say that, it doesn't mean we're bringing them in for a parent education on curriculum or a delivery method. It's about parents having an opportunity to be educated on some of the challenges facing our children and then have a parent-to-parent opportunity to share with each other. I've had success with that in previous walks and heard that loud and clear from the parents and from the community members that I met with. Again, they feel like they're very educated in what goes on in their children's school as far as programs and curriculum. That's not what they meant by that. It's about, you know, some of those ever-facing challenges, you know, that we read about and hear about, I mean, as of like today in the STAR, some of the challenges facing our young adults that really are frightening with some of the synthetic drug activity and things like that. Educational opportunities for parents, and then they get parent-to-parent opportunities to share as a part of that. Student growth model, we look to share suggestions for K-5 at discussion on the 19th as well as we had presented to the board. And that document has been shared very openly with the teachers and the association about how we could put forth NWEA, back to the theme of, we're not going to implement unless we can take away. This actually takes away a significant amount of piecemeal things that we've done, all good things, but can consolidate them in the NWEA and everything we've heard. It's much more teacher-friendly, real-time information back for teachers and administrators. be components of that. And again, I will put more timelines in this document just as a guide, but we're looking for some of that this year, much like the teacher evaluation tweaks. But we have six twelve work to be done to look at how we're going to look at a growth model for that as well. And we all need to know that we're still waiting for the state to release what they're going to be doing as well. And they do intend for that to still be a growth model compared to last year. And we don't know how that's going to look yet, but that's out there. We want to continue to look at integrating technology into daily instruction. That's Advanced Ed. So is actually the first one on parent ed opportunities. They gave a little piece on that in our Advanced Ed surveys. But in the Advanced Ed piece, they feel like that's an area that we can grow in. And again, as we said, that was reaffirming because we recognized that last year, that's an area we want to work on. And we did this summer with the C4 workshop that we hosted. And we're going to get details on how many teachers from Carmel Clay Schools presented, how many teachers from Carmel Clay Schools attended that workshop that was sponsored. And the purpose of that workshop was a state grant to promote and model integration of technology into daily instruction. So we're making advances, but we realize that's an area that we can grow in. And Advanced Ed reaffirmed that. I'll continue with the student advisory. I'm going to expand that group at the high school. And again, the intent of that is to connect with all three middle school attendance areas too in high school age students. So it does have a broad range across our attendance areas. Under program evaluations, we learned enough last year to know that it's time to get our K-12 guidance counseling group together and do a program evaluation. Good stuff going on K-12, but we haven't done a program evaluation of our guidance counseling services for some time. And that'll be part of what we do this year. One thing that isn't there under program evaluation, what we'd like to start in January is do a program evaluation of services for high ability students as well. So I'll add that in, but I want you to just make a note that that will be another program evaluation we suggest commencing in January. Again, very good things going on with our high ability groups in the elementaries and the middle school and the high school. But we believe, and you know, Amy and I have conferred, and she thinks, and I concur, it's time to take a look at that as a district, a program evaluation of high ability services for high ability students. So, and we look forward to engaging in a similar process that you saw on display tonight. You know, teachers and administrators sitting down together doing those evaluations, much like we have in the past. And again, my faith in those recommendations continues to be very strong. The high performing legislation, we'd really like, to be blunt, we didn't find a lot of things last year that we could do that the legislation opened up for us. What we did find as we looked at summer school, we used Indiana Online Academy. Linda Skaifish and her department are looking at now, as a result of summer school, they're looking at transcripts. How many kids passed? How did they do? So we can get a report. And Amy's going to work with them on a report on how many more opportunities did our kids have as a result of IOA as an option? And how do we want to go forward with that? I put that down as an example for the high performing schools. That wasn't a function of high performing schools, but that's the kind of thinking we want to do. What can we do to expand opportunities for our students? And the high performing thing is for secondary now, which is unfortunate, but that's the reality. So that's the kind of thinking we want as we go forward with this. I don't want to mislead anyone. IOA was not a function of high performing schools. Just an example of expanding those opportunities. As we go forward with Phase Two, as we heard tonight from our middle school, Stephanie and Lori are representatives from the committee, we intend to have that operationalized recommendation by December for scheduling for 2015-16. The SCL standards, again, that's connected to Advanced Ed as we look at how we deliver and embed the SCL models into our daily instruction. That was a piece that did come out in Advanced Ed. And it's a good chance that that'll migrate into the program evaluation of counseling and guidance counseling program evaluation too. There could be some definite merging there, which is, which is good. We do want these to be interrelated whenever we can. The next one on the learning management systems, I almost put that in communication because that really came out loud and clear in communication with various stakeholder groups. And they weren't saying, Nick, you need a learning management system. They were just saying, is there any way we could get something that allows us to see and get information in kind of a common format? I mean, that was even used. And it feeds into the LMS, which is really about our students. We want it to be student friendly, parent friendly, and teacher friendly. So it allows for them to be on the same page. And as a parent, you could look and see a similar communication and web format. And it really would foster a positive discussion. It did come up in some of these places that use e-learning days, that absent an LMS, they're very limited as to what they can do with their e-learning days. And I know Kathy uses one at Butler. IU is going to Canvas going into this year. Indiana Online Academy is going to Canvas as their LMS. Twenty-nine of our teachers that teach for IOA have been trained in their LMS. Number of our secondary teachers use Edmodo as a learning management system. So it's an opportunity again to engage with our teachers and administrators. Start to look at what are those systems out there and how could that facilitate a number of things. As some of the board experience we had for our administrative retreat, I'm not grabbing his name. Help me out. Rick Warmley, and to talk about differentiation of not only instruction but assessment and a discussion on standard-based grading system. Good news on that is there's been a lot of discussion prior to this and modifications, I know at the high school level as well as other levels, looking at how we do grades and how we do reporting of grades. So a lot of work has been done on this prior to this, but we believe it's time to take a look at how this could look going forward. And are there some more modifications we could make as we explore standard-based grading? The next one is definitely straight out of Advanced Ed and something we had talked about last year. We need to continue to look at our changing demographic and respond to those needs. We have done some responding to that for this year as we look at the shifting demographic at some of our elementary centers and middle school and high school as it relates to ENL students, changing program delivery for this year as a result of shifting demographic and resources at our elementary, middle, and high schools respectively to meet those needs. But that's something that we will be looking at as this demographic does shift and those needs do then evolve and change. In communication, we believe expedition is an outstanding program. Continue to do that and expand that. The communication plan, I've given reports on that. This year is a time to finalize that and present that to the board for implementation. It is the three-year cycle of calendar committee. That committee will meet early this fall and suggested three-year cycle back to the board for consideration in the fall. The next bullet point may seem like, what do you do with that one? But we do need to continue to tell the Carmel Clay Schools story regarding the tradition of excellence in education. I think it's an important story to tell. And I hear that at various, from administrators and from other people. And I just think that can never be undervalued. And I know I talked to teachers about it. And to be honest, I listened to the story more than I talked about it when I was at prep period meetings because those people have lived it. Some of them their entire teaching career. So I want to keep that in front of us because that's important. Obviously, we want to continue to communicate with the media in a positive way and regularly. The next one on the web platform, we have a lot of programs that are customized, web-based, much like the district did the year before last, looking at a program for the HR and the finance. It's time to look at our web-based program as we look at my CCS, parent portal, board notes, board policies, all those things that are customized to look at a comprehensive system that really embraces holistic change, looking at our web-based model. And it could, as Amy pointed out to me this morning, it could interface with LMS. There could, there could be another connection there. As I said in my introduction, the strategic plan is a piece that we talked about last year that we know is necessary to have all the tools in the toolkit for decision-making. Advanced Ed recognized that too, that that's a piece that we need to have. It really then has a chance to engage the community in what those district core values and beliefs are as well as looking at the ever-changing and constant challenges of redistricting. Those are generally in a strategic plan that look at a five-year window of time, which what I had suggested previous, we need to have a, those kind of things looked at in five-year increments at least. Finances, nothing really new there, but that's kind of affirming because we've got some sustainable processes in place thanks to Roger and his team as we look at the budget process. I know that him and his team monitor state and federal funding as those things emerge. We obviously want to engage with the association in a collaborative way for bargaining for 14-15. I really, as I looked at the legislative priorities piece that has been, I think that's an excellent component for the board, for administration. I've started my meetings this year again with our representatives, from the House of Representatives, from the Senate. And to have that CCS legislative priorities that will really be, I think, a dynamic feature for all of us as we have those discussions. Keeps it streamlined, it keeps it focused. And hopefully, we'll finalize those pretty early here in the fall. I think they're pretty close, honestly. I think they're really well...
Only purple.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think they're solid. And maybe we bring that up on an agenda just to adopt them sooner than later. And we'll continue to look for alternative revenue sources. Haven't found a lot of those. Well, but grants we have with the C4 grant, we will continue to pursue those, any grants we can that can give us professional development to help, in that case, deliver technology in the classroom. We'll look for those. Facilities, as I said last year, you don't have many of these, but these are big ones. And demographic and building capacity studies and strategic planning, again, that's, was part of our Advanced Ed piece, as well as the facility renovation piece to meet the needs of the instructional and extracurricular programs. And as we did last year, we monitor the impact of declining revenue caused by the legislation and the declining assessed valuation. And Roger and his team recommended a way to meet some of those challenges while keeping our buildings at the high standards that Carmel Clay Schools has established and our community expects. So that was done last year. And as we've said before, sometimes we make real-time decisions. And I think that was a very good one to keep that standard of excellence in our facilities where it should be. So Roger, well done. Faculty and staff. Continue to, I strongly recommend, we continue to meet monthly with association representation faculty to continue to promote collaboration and problem solving. I really think that's what we heard tonight with some of the training that Lynn Adler did, that telling the story, shared interests, common interest, continue to promote that as we do what we do. As was presented tonight by Luther, implement teacher committee recommendations. They're referring to them as tweaks for 14-15. And like we said, that'll be presented at discussion next week on the 19th. And as Martha said, there's a long-term goal as far as best practice with implementation in 15-16. And the committee, I'm confident in the committee to do that. We want to start developing mentoring induction programs for new administrators and teachers. That was a piece that we continue to hear as we look at districts that are high performing like Carmel Clay Schools, to have those mentoring induction programs and keep that retention rate very high. We do a lot of fantastic professional development Carmel Clay Schools. We want to retain those teachers and administrators. We're invested in them. And we appreciate what they do and what they deliver. And when they become part of CCS, we like, when we can, unless it's a good family decision for them, we want to keep them here, keep that retention. Professional development, that was a theme that came up through district leadership team and through the building level meetings. Now, for clarity, the quality of professional development, I've not heard one person question quality. The quality is high, the standard is very high. What we'd like to do with the committee is look at the delivery system back to, there's only so much time that we have, and how do we want to use that time? And that's the piece that we want to look at. And maybe focus it into a delivery system that teachers and administrators come together and say, this may be the model that we want to use. But no time was the quality of PD ever questioned. The quality is very, very Organizational reorganizational study, we, as presented last year, we will do phases two and three. Phase one was the realignment. We're in restructuring and reallocation this year. And I anticipate that being done by end of first semester with recommendations to the board for start of second semester. And again, as I stated last year, that was a two-year process. And the recommendations would be far 15-16, but we want to have those suggested recommendations in front of and ready to go end of first semester. So it allows for us to transition, whatever the case may be. As we presented last year and as was facilitated, the first reading and the draft of this was the board superintendent communication expectations. And I think as we did last year, and the more I sit in this chair and the more I appreciate public meetings where civility is modeled for the community, I don't underestimate nor do I take that for granted. And I think these kind of pieces foster that. Very open expectations that we talk about, that the community sees, that our students see. We have a lot of young men and young ladies come to our meetings to be recognized. And for them to walk out and see civility modeled in a public meeting is very valuable. It's, I think, the most powerful modeling that can be done. And I appreciate that. And I just think these kind of things foster that. And then our evaluation cycle, this, I believe, if I missed anything, please tell me of our changes. The quarterly reports are given November, January, April, June at the bottom. I didn't quite know how to, you know, I don't know if Dana could have fitted any more balloons in here. So I think this is the best way to get in there in the physical space. But it's an important piece to have highlighted. And I made a couple other tweaks to February, March, board self-governance review with ISB rep. And, but again, another important planning tool to keep things in front of us. So I thank you for indulging me. You know, any input is always appreciated. Any input is always appreciated.
Well, thank you very much, Nick. That was extremely comprehensive, and I really appreciate how you used stakeholder feedback to formulate the actions. I like how we've continued to use the big headers for each of these categories because those don't ever change, and we really came to that conclusion through the course of the summer. So I'm very pleased. I open up to the board, discussion, questions, ideas. Mrs. Hackett?
I do have a couple of questions and a couple of comments, but my first comment really is just in line with Leila just said. And I hope everyone who's listening and out there in TV land, Yahoo land, that they appreciate when, it's just amazing sometimes when you make a comment or you hear another make a comment, and then a couple of weeks to a couple of months later, you do see Dr. Wall incorporated into something. So you know, after example after example, that he's, he really is listening to a variety of inputs. So hopefully you're feeling what I'm feeling on that. Thank you. Like I said, a couple of questions, a couple of comments. Under student-centered goals, I suppose, but one thing you had brought up in the past at one point, and not to add anything, but I just wanted your comments, we also in charge of a group of preschoolers too. Have you given any thought as far as when we talk about looking at K through 12 or looking at our students, how they fit in?
The pre-K?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we did talk about that, and there was discussion about community-based preschool. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, or whatever else.
Yeah, or whatever. That is something that we've had discussion in administrative meetings about. Amy and I have talked about it. Sorry. Didn't hit it right. Amy and I have talked about it. I know some of the, I know Jay and Specialite have talked about it. So that is something that we're definitely aware of. I don't, and there's no reason we can't put something in there as we look at the goals. It's definitely something to explore, the pre-K.
This is, this is binding off a lot, but just a thought out there.
And it could be the monitor changing student demographic, that could be encompassed in there, because that would be an emerging need that is in that. But I appreciate you bringing that up again. We haven't lost that, but I think that would fit in that student demographic shift to meet those needs.
Okay, I could see that.
Well, it depends on what the legislature does this year too.
That's true.
Couple of my questions in between you answered in your presentation. On finance, under develop CCS legislative priorities, just really more of a comment, and probably something you've already thought of, but those really, or that piece really aligns nicely with a couple of the communication goals. So just kind of a note, I guess, and maybe community and state elected representatives. I think mine says, is that what it should say?
Community, comma, should be.
Oh, comma?
Community, state.
Oh, community.
Which?
Oh, I took it as.
And, two different, right?
Develop CCS legislative priorities to share with community and state elected representatives? Or?
Yeah, there should.
Okay.
Should be.
I think I had one more.
But you're right, that definitely is a communication. Many of these can be in a couple areas.
Inhead with each other, yeah.
Which is actually good.
How it should work.
Yeah.
And then this is, I don't want to get into big detail, and this might be a Roger. On facilities, the second one down on the left, continue to monitor the impact of declining revenue caused by legislation and declining assessed valuation. Is our evaluation still declining?
No, I made a note of that. It had been, but now, last year at least, it didn't decline any. That was for sure, it hadn't declined.
Are ever-changing?
So hopefully it will not be declining.
Okay, good. That's good news. That's it, thanks. I appreciate it.
And I can tweak that just as a monitor.
Okay.
Mrs. Fried?
I was, of course, having taught AP Calculus and multivariable and dealing with these high-ability students, and really excited to see that it's time to evaluate that program and look at it. But I also saw, kind of along the same lines, the possibility to tie that in with our high-performing school goal as well, because we can make a lot of opportunities for these youngsters available. And the other thing too is when we're high-performing schools, have we looked at any ways that we could maybe adjust our school schedule to allow for more professional development? I know that in some neighboring districts, they've been able to put half-days back in the mix. I don't know how they did that.
Yes. We're not sure either, and I know what you're talking about, but I don't know how that expands student opportunities. See, our folk, I think I mentioned that last year, our focus has been on how can we expand student opportunities as a result of legislation? I know they did that. I don't know that's the, well, I don't know that's the most user-friendly model to our families. I don't know that they were big fans of those days, unless I'm wrong. I think that's the feedback I got. Right. So that's kind of a balancing piece there.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Dr. Wall, I personally would like to know more about the student growth model. So I don't know if that's something that could be a part of a workshop or something in the future that just, as a layperson in this field, I'm interested to know more about that. And I guess in the same sense, also standards-based grading. I'm not sure exactly what that is. It sounds like a good idea, but I'd just like to understand that a little bit more. Not now, but coming. It warms the cockles of my heart to hear a discussion about long-range strategic planning, especially if there's a financial component to that sort of a thing. You know, we've discussed so many times before that it's impossible to know what tomorrow brings, but if we can look as far down that road as possible and begin to anticipate some of the cliffs that we might be headed over, such as the end of our referendum, that would be a very useful thing, I think, to discuss the financial realities with our stakeholders as we're engaging them in similar discussions on our values and other things. And a final comment, I'm thrilled with what we're doing in the communications area. At the same time, I know that there are other things that could fit under that topic that we're currently doing, such as our advisory committees, where I believe that having your faculty advisory and your student advisory groups, they give you important information that those two stakeholder groups have to communicate back to us. Doesn't require rewriting anything, but just, personally, I think of communication as embracing both directions of that street. Our telling our story, which is very, very important that we do that, but also that we develop an acute sense of hearing to hear what teachers and parents and students have to tell us. All the other, I'm extremely pleased with the set of goals that you come up with, Nick.
Thank you, Greg. And the standards-based piece and the student growth, we did anticipate those being workshop topics. We want to let the buildings a little time to ruminate on the Rick Warmley presentation, and then we'll come back and give the board a workshop topic update. It's good, just for all of us. It's a good topic to get out there.
Speaking of the Rick Warmley presentation, do we know when that will be available to view online?
I know, as of this morning. Amy says CIESC is trying to clean up the, connected to his presentation, and as soon as we get that, it's going to be on our, what's our media? On Safari on our media site, so that can be an ongoing professional development tool for our principals and teachers.
Okay. I would encourage all board members to watch that. It was very engaging and so exciting, and I'm very excited about the way we, as a school district, can incorporate some of these ideas that were presented. Really good, good stuff. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much, Dr. Wall. Do you have any other comments for us?
I do appreciate the feedback because, you know, the engaged stakeholder goal-setting process that Greg was referring to, that is a vehicle to get this information. And I think that what I've learned doing this, it's not that you, you can't do everything, but what it does, it develops these themes that permeate the groups, and they just, they, to be honest, they kind of jump out at the end of the process. And then it allows that engaged process to have follow-through. And it's, I think it's an annual piece to be done. I'm excited to go through the strategic planning process with all of us, because that will then be the larger guide for the big pieces that we talked about tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure I've taken a note, the right notes from the board, what I've heard, adoption of our legislative priorities for our August meeting, and then, and then for workshop topics, student growth model as well as the standards-based grading. Is there anything else that you want to be sure that we have on our radar?
You know what, actually, when I looked through at one point, I noted workshop topics, but can I just email that to you in case there?
Yeah, absolutely. I just, there were a few ideas tossed about at the meeting. I wanted to make sure I had those down, so we did not overlook that. Okay.
Yeah, and then we can build the workshop kind of calendar off that.
Yes, absolutely. So I will go ahead and have an email sent to everyone to offer some feedback.
Great.
Yes, please go ahead.
If there's anybody on the board who has ideas on the legislative priorities that I have not heard from, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mouse. Well, with that, we are almost ready to adjourn the meeting, but I cannot possibly forget to say thank you to the U.S. 31 Team for opening the roundabout at 1:36 in Old Meridian, because now we can go behind the school. That opened sometime between four and five. Yeah, you told me it would be done, and I was so excited. So, so thank you.
Thank Ron Farren for that.
Thank you, Ron Farren. We'll send your personal email.
Ron Farren, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board before we close? Go ahead, Mrs. Fried.
I just want to wish everyone the best start of the year. I know today was a big day for teachers and administrators, and they're getting all the things in place, but I still get excited when school starts and, you know, even though I don't have to buy school supplies anymore and stuff like that, it's just like you can't walk by a binder without picking it up and saying, "Oh, wouldn't that be nice in my classroom?" But good luck this year. I know you all do your best. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Fried, you could come shopping with us, because we have a child in every school, so we have quite an assortment at home.
I have a crate of binders and things that my children never used that you could borrow.
We will come over.
There you go.
Okay. With that, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening and taking time out of your very busy schedule before we're all off to school with our students. Thank you, administrators, teachers, support staff for entertaining us this evening. Thank you so very much. Have a nice evening. Meeting adjourned.